The meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now power to order. Fire Chief Wolberton will give the indication. And we will have a prayer by, I mean, the special allegiance, by Councilman Brown.
By your heads, pray with me. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings that you just so richly pour out on us and we're so undeserving. We give you praise and glory for that today. Father, we just thank for our opportunity to be here and breathe the breath of life. We thank you for this meeting that will be occurring. We just pray and uplift every elected official here and every member this year will be discussing city business that we ask for godly wisdom from above, Lord, to make the right decisions that would first glorify and honor you and would help those who be affected by them. Lord, we pray that you would just walk with us through this meeting. May everything that we say honor and glorify you. And we ask all these things in the name of above all names, Jesus Christ our Savior. Amen.
Let us repeat the unison. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if I may roll please.
Councilman Brown.
Present.
Councilman Emerson.
Here.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Councilman Corbin.
Present.
Councilman Fleury.
Present.
Councilwoman Lance.
And Councilman Bowman.
Here.
You're on my list, it's no different than you. We're shopping with you today.
Is there a motion to approve the matter? It's been moved by Councilman Jenkins and seconded by Councilman Corbin to approve the move. Motion passes five, six. On that.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council and those in the audience today. Thank you for allowing us to recognize some very special people, outstanding citizens, as well as two of our firefighters who were able to rescue some people during a serious accident over at the Duck Pond on East Kings Highway. And so at this time, I'm going to ask Chief Wolberton if he will come up and assist me as we make these recognitions.
Council members, council chair, mayor, C.O. We're here today to recognize some of our citizens who went above and beyond in what they would be their daily walk of life when a very tragic event occurred on March 12th, 2018, at the Duck Pond there at East Kings Highway and Triple Barstow Highway. On that day, there was an accident that, with a car that had two adults and three children in it. And there were several here with me today that we'd like to recognize for their efforts in that day. The car was completely submerged in the bayou and these citizens, with no regard for their own safety, put themselves in harm's way to save some children and adult from that car. We'd like to recognize them today with our Citizen Life Saving Award. So if you bear with me, I'll take them one at a time.
Chief Wolberton?
Yes.
The family's on their way in. You just give us about 10 seconds.
The council members also with us today, and I'm so glad that they were able to make it today. We have Ms. Kathy Brown, who is the mother of Ms. Megan Victoria Brown, who did perish in the accident. We want to express our sincere sympathies and condolences to her and her family in this loss. And we also have the children that were present, and I hope all three of them are here. If not, we'll go ahead and just announce them all by name. We have Samantha Edwards, who is nine years old, Marygan Hernandez, who is also nine years old, and Logan Brown, who is seven years old. Shreveport Fire Department Citizen Life Saving Award, John Thomas Jr., for your exceptional heroism demonstrated on March 12th, 2018, while saving the life of your fellow citizen who was trapped in a vehicle submerged underwater due to a motor vehicle accident. Without hesitation, you made a decision that will forever change the life of another. Mr. Thomas was the assistance of your fellow citizens. You unselfishly risked your life to save the life of another person. Your actions made a difference and saved the life of your fellow citizen. Given under my hand, the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, this 27th day of March 2008, is signed by the Honorable Ollie S. Tyler, Mayor of Shreveport, and myself, Scott Wolberton, Fire Chief, City of Shreveport Fire Department. Each one is also going to receive our Shreveport Fire Department Challenge Coin, which has our motto on it, "Community First, Serving With Honor, Integrity, and Respect," and also the "Seal The City of Shreveport" on the other side. So we also want you to have that, and we thank you for what you did. Next recipient is Cole Jones. Citizen Life Saving Award for your exceptional heroism demonstrated on March 12th, 2018, while saving the life of your fellow citizen who was trapped in a vehicle submerged underwater due to a motor vehicle accident. Without hesitation, you made a decision that will forever change the life of another. Mr. Jones, with the assistance of your fellow citizens, you unselfishly risked your life to save the life of another person. Your action made a difference and saved the life of your fellow citizen. Given under my hand, the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, the 27th day of March 2018, that is also signed by the Honorable Ollie S. Tyler, Mayor of Shreveport, and myself. We'd like to present that. Mr. Hunter Coleman. Citizen Life Safety Award for your exceptional heroism demonstrated on March 12th, 2018, while saving the life of your fellow citizen who was trapped in a vehicle submerged underwater due to a motor vehicle accident. Without hesitation, you made a decision that will forever change the life of another. Mr. Coleman, with the assistance of your fellow citizens, you unselfishly risked your life to save the life of another person. Your action made a difference and saved the life of your fellow citizen. Given under my hand, the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, the 27th day of March, signed also by Mayor Ollie S. Tyler and myself. And the final Citizen Life Saving Award goes to Timothy Wayne Campo Sr., for your exceptional heroism demonstrated on March 12th, 2018, while saving the life of your fellow citizen who was trapped in a vehicle submerged underwater due to a motor vehicle accident. Without hesitation, you made a decision that will forever change the life of another. Mr. Campo, with the assistance of your fellow citizens, you unselfishly risked your life and saved the life of another person. Your actions made a difference and saved the life of your fellow citizens. Given under my hand, the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, the 27th day of March 2018, signed There were also two other citizens. Once these four citizens helped rescue the children and the mother from the car, there was two ladies who assisted with the children. We'd like to recognize them today with a Citizen Meritorious Service Award. First one is for Ms. Tina Henderson, for your exceptional compassion demonstrated on March 12th, 2008, while providing comfort to children rescued from a vehicle submerged underwater due to a motor vehicle accident. Without hesitation, you made a decision that will forever change the life of another. Ms. Henderson, your actions made a difference in the life of a child and their family. And I'd like to also stress that both of these ladies stayed on scene the entire time with those children, just helping them, trying to cope and work through what was going on here. And we want to thank them very much and recognize you all. Ms. Henderson, this is the Citizen Meritorious Service Award for your exceptional compassion demonstrated on March 12th, 2018, while providing comfort to children rescued from a vehicle submerged underwater due to a motor vehicle accident. Without hesitation, you made a decision that will forever change the life of another. Ms. Henderson, your actions made a difference in the life of a child and their family. Given under my hand, the City of Shreveport, 27th day of March 2018, signed by Mayor Ollie Also on that day, we had several firefighters that responded to that call. A couple of initial responding companies want to recognize a couple of individuals. Their company officer recommended them for commendation, and we wanted to recognize them today also for their efforts. First commendation for heroism, firefighter Jay Preston Pollard. Jay is a very young firefighter, two years on the job. He's had no formal training in water rescue, and he had no protection as far as underwater breathing apparatus in his efforts on that same day, that day. Firefighter Jay Preston Pollard, for your exceptional heroism demonstrated on March 12th, 2018, while on the scene of a motor vehicle submerged underwater with the driver trapped inside. Without hesitation, firefighter Pollard entered the murky water without the aid of scuba gear. He was able to locate the vehicle and open the driver's door. Firefighter Pollard surfaced for another breath and then returned to the vehicle where he cut the seatbelt from the driver. He then surfaced with the female driver. Firefighter Pollard risked his life in an attempt to save the life of another. Given under my hand, the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, the 27th day of March 18, is signed by the Honorable Mayor Ollie S. Tyler and myself. And our second firefighter. Commendation for heroism, Fire Engineer Jeffrey M. Allen. We commonly call him Mark. For your exceptional heroism demonstrated on March 12th, 2018, while on scene of a motor vehicle submerged underwater with the driver trapped inside. Without hesitation, Fire Engineer Allen entered the murky water without the aid of scuba gear. He located the vehicle and firefighter Pollard. Together, both Fire Engineer Allen and firefighter Pollard surfaced with the female driver. Fire Engineer Allen risked his life in an attempt to save the life of another. Given under my hand, the City of Shreveport, 27th day of March 2018, signed by the Mayor Ollie S. Tyler and myself, Scott Wolberton, Fire Chief. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize his captain, Captain Chris Burden. He recommended both of these individuals for commendation. He wouldn't tell you, but he was right there in the middle of it also. He's one of those officers that leads from the front, and he was right there in that water with them, ensuring that they needed what they needed and they was as safe as they could possibly be in a situation like that. So I want to recognize him also for recommending them for commendation. Thank you very much.
Members of the council, we just want to, once again, say thank you so much. Our hearts are filled today because of citizens and because of firefighters like these that you see standing behind us. Without people like that in our community, we can't be our very best. But these citizens and these firefighters have shown bravery, heroism, and compassion. And our citizens really stepped up and did a great job. So I want to say to our publics, people like these are the ensign heroes. So I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart and say to them that we'll always remember what you've done here for the citizens here in Shreveport. Thank you so much.
The grandmother would like to have a word. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. On behalf of my family and myself, I would like to say that there's enough words to express the gratitude that we feel and to each and every one of you. I want to thank you. You will always live in our hearts forever, and God bless each and every one of you.
Just, I guess, on behalf of the council, I just want to say these are the real heroes on both sides, and that's what Shreveport is about. And we have the greatest fire department that it is on this side of the world. And I just want to say thank you all to the citizens. I mean, I'm a little emotional right now, which I'm sure most of the room is, and I just want to say you guys are the epitome of hero, and I appreciate you and thank you for your service.
Take the picture together.
While they posed for a picture, I may take this just brief opportunity to say how fortunate I feel to be sitting from this angle, getting a chance to hear from all of you and about all of the wonderful things that you've done. I mean, any time that I hear anybody criticize or not be as confident in Shreveport, I mean, I think of who I'm looking at right now. I mean, this is, you are what makes us so proud to be in this city, to be from this city, a place where people took out of their days, where people risked their lives to help others, and where they truly put others before themselves. And that makes me so proud to be a part of your city, and I thank you all for what you've
Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished gifts? Does that like to? Councilman Jenkins?
I have four today, which might be a new personal record. You know, I must say, it's going to be a tough act to follow. Certainly, you know, that was an impressive start to our meeting today. But that doesn't mean these people don't have important things to say as well. So let me first start with Speak Squad, who is here today. If you wouldn't mind coming up, members of the Speak Squad, and talking a little bit about your program. Actually, I see your spokesman is coming, but that doesn't mean the rest of y'all can't come up here with him as well. So all of y'all get up here. This is, come to the microphone, if you would, state your name for the record, and just give us a quick synopsis about your program.
Hi, I'm Noah Moser, and I'm a student leader in Speak Squad. Speak Squad is a local chapter of a global organization called the Institute for Cultural Communicators. And our local chapter provides a safe community of like-minded families that challenge and encourage each other in our communication journey. So our local chapter sponsor mentors us, the student leaders, and then we facilitate communications and leadership training to our peers. And thank you for letting us come here today, and thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak on this platform. It's really cool.
And then if we could add each one of you to speak into the microphone with your name and your age would be great, okay? You pull down to your.
Hi, my name's Carson, and I'm 12.
I'm Esben Robertson, and I'm 13.
My name's Ethan Jeffis, and I'm 16 years old.
My name is Caitlin Clampett, and I'm 13.
I'm Lydia Moser, and I'm 13.
And I'm Luke Deutsch, and I'm 13.
Great. These folks are here to watch us today, make sure that we are living at the high bar that they're hoping to set. So appreciate y'all being here. And any of the councilmen want to say anything?
Well, now, what, do y'all all go to the same school, or are you at different schools?
We're all homeschooled, sir.
Oh, how fantastic. What an interesting kind of charge to have as a club. I think that's something that is so useful today. In a day and age where social media is kind of a predominant way that a lot of people communicate, it is sometimes a very one-sided communication. So it is very interesting to see young people thinking more intentionally about communicating and intentionally about how we interact with one another and how we exchange ideas that are different and how we build upon that. So how cool to see that and learn about what you're doing, and I wish you great success.
Thank you.
I wanted to say I'm glad that you all are here. That way, it'll help me to keep myself in tune and behave today. So I'm glad that you all came here today to watch us. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys. Okay, next, I'd like to invite up Laura Alderman to discuss about Step Four.
Good afternoon. Chairman Bowman, thank you, Councilman Jenkins, for this opportunity, and all of you members of the council, Mayor Tyler, and the audience. I am here today to extend a personal invitation to the Step Forward Report to the Community, which will take place on Wednesday, April 11th, at 8:00, at the Bossier Parish Community College Gym. I know it's early, but we will feed you breakfast, and there's no charge to attend. And we encourage anyone who is interested in learning about the vital signs of this community, which are the outcomes of our children, to attend and find out more about whether or not all of our children in this community are thriving. If you want to know the answer, you're going to have to come on April 11th and find out what the data has to tell us. I think each of you have received a copy of this invitation, and I'm going to share these with those of you in the audience today, and I'm sorry if we run out. You can find the event on Facebook. You can also find it on Eventbrite.com, and you can register there. We need to know that you're coming, so we make sure that we have enough space and food for everyone. This is the pre-release copy of the report, and what it tells you is how our children are doing from cradle to career. We track critical developmental milestones such as school readiness, high school graduation, middle grade math. And ultimately, we want to know that every young adult in this community has an opportunity for a sustainable living wage job. And Dr. Tim Magnner, who is here representing the chamber today, will tell you that workforce development has to begin at birth. And so we have to begin thinking about whether we are preparing our youngest citizens for an adulthood of success. And so thank you for your service to this community. This is part of our service to you. We want you, as you make so many important decisions, to be able to do that with good, reliable information, and I know you will find this report to be invaluable. So come on April 11th. We will have copies of the full report for you. We want you to have all of this information. I'm going to share this pre-release copy with Mayor Tyler today for her review, and thank you, Mayor Tyler, for your investment and leadership at Step Forward prior to your role as mayor. And so that's all I wanted to share with you all today. And again, I will pass these out through the audience, and I apologize that I didn't bring enough for everyone. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, next, Ms. Zee Phillips, who I think has a proposal about her program and something that we could do with the City of Shreveport.
Hi, how are y'all today? I'm Zenita Phillips. 950 North Market is my address here in Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm with A-Bate of Louisiana. I'm the Northwest President Chapter. We're a motorcycle organization that fights for legislation, and I'm here to ask the City of Shreveport to do a proclamation for us during the month of May, which is Motorcycle Awareness Month. I didn't get a copy to you guys.
Okay, that's all right. Here, if you hand it to, sign the sheet, that's all right.
But I'm here just to ask the City of Shreveport to support us during that month and help us to make our roadways safer for our motorcyclists. We have a lot of accidents going on with people failing to yield, texting, and driving, and it's really affecting our motorcycle community as a whole.
And just for my information, really, is there, do you track motorcycle-specific accidents in Caddo or Shreveport, or are you able to identify if we have an uptick in motorcycle accidents? I'm assuming the police department has something along those lines. I just, I've never seen stats that's separating motor vehicle from motorcycles, but I'm sure that's out there.
The accidents for motorcyclists have risen due to, like I said, individuals in cars texting and driving, their failure to yield. And something else that I would like to help with is when we're hit as motorcyclists, we don't have anything protecting us. A couple of my friends were hit last year and were disabled. The people who hit them had no insurance. They stayed in the hospital for over six.
Even worse, the person who hit my dad when he was on a motorcycle, and he's still in a hospital seven months later, is the person who has minimum insurance that pays for like a day in the hospital.
That's correct.
And the rest is on you.
Yes.
Otherwise, Dad's uninsured motorist policy would have kicked in. So there are challenges, you're right.
Yes. So I wanted to start at the city level and see if I can start getting you guys on board with us, and let's start working towards some rights to protect those motorcyclists.
And is this the Motor Safety Awareness Month of May, is that a national?
It is, yes.
Program, and we would be just proclamation supporting this national?
That's correct.
Okay.
We'll take care of you.
Okay. Awesome.
Thanks for being here, and as I mentioned, I may personally have a reason to be a little more interested in your calls nowadays.
I would love to be able to attend these meetings every two weeks and try to keep y'all informed on what we have going on and the laws that we're trying to have passed, and hopefully you guys can help us.
I'd love to learn more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I'd like to recognize a fairly routine speaker at our council meetings, Mr. Wiener, but he is not talking about a particular program that he's suggesting, a potential donation to the City of Shreveport. So. So, Bill, if you wait.
I'm Bill Weiner, live at number two Longleaf Lane, Shreveport, retired architect and artist. I started collecting patchwork quilts about 40 years ago. Nobody appreciated them. They were just being used to wrap stuff in and discarded, but I recognized them as a folk art that needed to be protected and preserved, so I started acquiring them. About 15 years ago, I stopped because I had too many, and I would like to offer my collection to the city of Shreveport. It's what I call a permanent loan. There's some legal reasons for that rather than a straight donation, to be put in the Riverview Auditorium on the walls. Just plain beige walls, but hang maybe 60 or so quilts. And A, it will be a tourist attraction. I know this because I had a show years ago at Louisiana Tech, and it drew a lot of people. And I had a show years ago at Barnwell, and it broke all their attendance records. And I'm willing to let the city have these as long as they take care of them. And I've always wanted to see them on the walls of the auditorium there. And today I read you're getting ready to renovate the auditorium, so it's the perfect time we can make the little studs in the walls to use for a hanging system. And I'd like to go forward with this donation and probably work through the city attorney's office for active donation and active acceptance, and with the reversionary clauses necessary that if a future council wants to sell them, they can't, and stuff like that. So, but I want to answer questions.
I mean, curiosity, truthfully, and if you don't feel comfortable answering, have you had them appraised?
No, it doesn't matter. I'm not taking a tax deduction. I'm just making them available.
Gotcha. Okay.
And actually, Bill, in regards to where you want them placed, you said Riverview Hall is?
In the auditorium.
Any city auditorium? I mean, you have a preference?
The Riverview Auditorium on those two big blank walls that are very high, because they need to be placed where nobody can jump up and touch them.
Okay. I guess my question is, if another, if the administration felt another location was more suitable, would that be an option for you? Are you, are you just saying you donated them to be placed in Riverview Hall?
It's an option now, but in the future, it'll have to be under the rules of the donation, which, you know, if that building burns down or falls down and they need to be moved, that's understandable. But if the city needs money and wants to sell them, can't do that.
I think the details will be worked out in the donation. I think the details could be worked out in regards to how they would be received.
But I want to work with one person.
Well, you work with the administration. They'll help you.
I prefer the attorney because.
The appropriate person would be helping. I trust you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Okay.
And this is the first time of recycling in this country, where a woman would put her children's clothes in a cedar chest, and she died, her daughter would find them, make a quilt top, put it in another cedar chest, and the granddaughter would take it out and quilt it. So, it's recycling materials in history. And last thing, quilts are just like classical Baroque music. It's a repetition and variation on a theme. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so those are?
Those are yours?
Those are mine.
Any other council members?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to recognize distinguished parish commissioner of District 12, Mr. Lewis Johnson. Good to see you, sir. You want to come up and greet the? No. Well, thank you for coming.
I thought he was going to jump in. I thought he was part of the duck pond deal.
Well, he's a former firefighter, so he's a distinguished firefighter as well. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Other council members. Madam Mayor, did you have any?
Yes, sir, I have some announcements. Thank you so much. As you know, a press conference was held last week, but I want to mention how thrilled we are that the Miss USA and the Miss Teen USA pageants will be held here in our city of Shreveport, and we are excited about all the guests and the economic boost this will bring to our city and to our region. Also, last week, we held the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Valencia Park, which is in Councilman Jeff Efferson's district. The renovations included a new basketball gymnasium, a new arts and crafts room, new computer lab, a new multipurpose room, exercise and dance rooms, as well as a new CLO office. The total project cost was more than $2 million. We will also be inviting you all and the public to come join us for the ribbon-cutting and grand opening of the new Fire Station 17 that is in Councilman Flurries District, and that's next Wednesday, April 4th, at 4:00 PM at 2901 Barrett Road here in our city. So, we, another project we are checking off of the list of projects getting done, so we would love to have you to come and be our guest. Next announcement, following the ribbon-cutting from last week, we had a community meeting to inform residents in that area about the April 28 election. We discussed the continuation of the six tax propositions, which will allow us to continue to provide basic city services. Since we last met, we also held another meeting at A.B. Palmer David Rains. We held other meetings, rather, at A.B. Palmer David Rains and the Highland Center. We will be doing several of these type meetings at our community centers in each of your respective council districts, council members. So, we are asking if you will please join us and help us make sure that our citizens are educated about the importance and how critical these tax renewals are for the citizens in this city. The Louisiana Conference on Water Supply, Sewage, and Industrial Waste, Inc. was held in our city last week, and we had the privilege of getting, of greeting those in attendance from around the state. I also have here a resolution that was presented to the city, so if you'll allow me just a minute, a couple of minutes to read it, it is for the city and not for the mayor. So, the resolution says, "Whereas the city of Shreveport has served as the host venue for the 81st Annual Short Course of the Louisiana Conference on Water Supply, Sewage, and Industrial Waste, Inc., and whereas the city of Shreveport have extended to us the unique hospitality for which the city of Shreveport is well-known, and whereas we are very appreciative of the warm greetings and hospitality extended to the Board of Directors and the general membership of the Louisiana Conference. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Louisiana Conference on Water Supply, Sewage, and Industrial Waste at its 81st Annual Short Course held in Shreveport, Louisiana, this 19th day of March 2018, that this organization go on record expressing sincere appreciation to the city of Shreveport by the adoption of this resolution, that a copy of this resolution be included in the permanent minutes of this organization, and that a copy be furnished by the secretary to the management of these facilities. Pass and approve this 19th day of March 2018." And of course, the chair for the resolutions committee was Ms. Camille Mize, and Mr. Philip Robinson was the chair of the Louisiana Conference. We continue to serve our citizens with numerous and various events. Since we met last, the city has supported several events, including Band Wars at Festival Plaza, St. Patty's Day Block Park at Festival Plaza, Shreveport Symphony, Riverview Theater, Song Fest, Mamie Hicks Community Center, Gumbo Gladiators at Festival Plaza, Craw Fest Festival, Betty Virginia Park, and Anika's Easter Egg Extravaganza at AC Steer Park, and many, many others. Last weekend, we had probably five different events going on in our city. So, we have a lot to do. When people say they don't have a lot to do, please know we have a lot to do in the city of Shreveport. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Those are the announcements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll go back to Councilman Jenkins. Yes, and I was remiss in not saying, and the mayor just mentioned it, but a fantastic Craw Fest, I mean, there were literally thousands of people there. Matt Snyder, Pinpoint Local Marketing, and Andrew Crawford of Rhino Coffee and Grandknuckles of Twisted Root really do a great job at that festival, and I mean, real impressive to see so many people from across the city there really enjoying it, and I know there was a lot of work for the city of Shreveport after the fact.
Yes, yes.
Because of that crawfish, but, you know, it is a true spirit of Louisiana that really was enjoyed between the music and the food and the kids and the activities and getting to use some of our facilities here, which, you know, people understated, come around for these tax renewals, and we need revenue to support facilities in this town, and that's where those taxes go. So, let's make sure that that's clear. But, you know, just a great event, and I know several of the councilmen were there at different parts of the day, so it was great. Thanks.
Good idea. Thank you. Anyone has anything related to the property standards for Mr. Green? At this time, no, saying no. Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Swain, did you have a master plan?
Yes, I wanted to report on what occurred at our last Master Plan Committee meeting, which occurred on Thursday, March 22nd, and yes, we did get a quorum, had actually good turnout from both the city and the parish, as well as the MPC. What we accomplished in that meeting is we did elect our chair for the year, which, again, once again, will be Councilman Jeff Efferson, who's done a good job of leading the committee, and we continue to ask for his leadership for 2018. We briefly talked about the amendments that have been made to the Unified Development Code. As you know, as you just recently approved 35 amendments, there's been a total of 79 changes that have been made since May of 2017, when the UDC went into effect. Those changes reflect our attempts to customize and to make the ordinance and document exactly the document we wanted, because we had anticipated from the very beginning, when the UDC was adopted, that there will be many changes. And you need to always understand that when we talk about the number of changes, that a lot of those are changes in definitions or new issues that come up. For example, a big proportion of those changes that we made just in the last council meeting that you had was in reflection to the changes to the Chapter 10, the alcohol requirements. And so, we knew our definitions and certain elements of the UDC had to be changed in order to stay in sync with Chapter 10. And a lot of times when we make a change, it sounds like a lot of changes, but it's actually just a few, because it's like a chain reaction. You change one thing here, then another thing changes in another section, because you have to consistently go through the document and dot all the i's and cross all the t's, and that's often the reason why it sounds like a larger number than normal. All these proposals and changes that we presented to the city council were intended to improve the document and make it even more user-friendly. We did, we also reported what we've been doing with the parish. The parish has also, has, even though their, their document went into effect, because they have a separate UDC, went into effect back in December of 2017, the 1st of December. There are now 79 amendments that they have yet to see or they have yet to look at in terms of the same things that you have already adopted in your previous meetings. Our intent is to bring those two documents as close together as possible. They will never be exactly the same, because there's certain unique elements with both, but we don't want the chasm to grow between the two so much that we are back to where we were before we had the UDC, UDC adopted, in which we had two completely different documents governing land use in the city and the parish. Other initiatives that we talked about was the MyGovernment Online, or what we have referred to as MyPermitNow. This is a web-based software that we have been in discussions with, had a demonstration back in January of this year, in which we invited the development community, as well as others, elected officials, to attend that meeting, which we did a demonstration of this, of this product that we're talking about. And then we have had subsequent meetings since then with city department heads. In fact, on Monday, this, this Monday of this, this week, we actually had a presentation in which we talked with Brian Crawford, the CAO, as well as the department heads of both of engineering, as well as water and sewer, IT, and permits, and, and as well as public works. The intent there is to bring to you an option for a web-based software that will be very transparent, and I'm not going to go into great detail about that, other than the fact that it is a tremendous cost saver for the city as well as the parish. And it will allow the transparency of the process, and I'll just give you a brief example. If someone has made, has made a permit application, they will know what stage that permit is in, and where the hangups are in the process. In other words, what is lacking? Who needs to do what? Who is responsible for what? And you will be able to access that and be able to see exactly where your permit is, or if you have a situation with property standards-related issues, and you're interested in knowing when a, perhaps the last time a lot was mowed, you will be able to go and be able to do that on this web-based procedure, and be able to see exactly when the last time the lot was mowed, and who mowed it, and what, what enforcement officer was assigned that project and make sure that it was done. All of that is the kind of stuff that we want to bring to you to make our city more business-friendly and user-friendly. It's an initiative that my board has asked me to pursue since I got here three and a half years ago, and it just takes a little while to get things moving, but the reality is, this is something that I hope we can continue to look at. Right now, what we're doing is a cost analysis of that, of that proposal that would replace a lot of our software that we have in the city, as well as the parish, in a unified software that would be usable by all departments, whether city or parish. And that's something I hope to report back to you later on about where we are in that, in that process, and we'll see especially what kind of an effect it can have in a positive way for our community. We also talked about the wireless telecommunications. Right now, there's, in our discussions with the city attorney, there's a desire to kind of concentrate on the small wireless facilities. We have already, the board has approved, that is, the MPC board has approved a version of the changes that were required on the, what we call Article 22 of the UDC. We will not reconsider that until probably May, where there's further changes from the input that may be coming from the telecommunications industry, and in attempt to come up with something that actually is workable for the city. Where our goal is, and I think something that I wanted to address very easily, because it has come up in discussions and some other meetings, is that we have always, the MPC has always been the place where wireless telecommunications applications have been submitted. We've been doing that for years, and so, and in doing so, we've done so very efficiently and effectively. There's actually been no backup or no problems with those applications. And one of the intentions is to maintain a one-stop-shop approach to this, so that when an application comes in, whether it's under the new ordinance that you all see necessary to put into place, that will still continue to be an efficient flow of activity, so that when someone comes here, they start with the MPC, and then all the communications with engineering and the other departments are made, so that applications can be speedily approved and processed as they have been in the past and will be in the future. The other thing, too, is, one of the things that I wanted to, that I did bring up, that was a topic of significant discussion yesterday, and in your work session, was a proposed joint meeting between the city council and the parish commission. I had asked at the very end of the meeting that we have an opportunity to have this joint meeting to address the issue of funding for the MPC. I had mentioned yesterday that we so often start that conversation too late, and since our budget has to be submitted by August, the first part of August, if we wait until that point in time, or into the fall, to start talking about what we do in terms of the funding, we're really, really at that point treading water and not getting anywhere. We feel like that it is imperative that the two bodies, in some fashion and in some form, come together and have a frank and open conversation about how they want to fund the MPC going forward. And I had proposed that that meeting take place. to fund the MPC going forward. And I had proposed that that meeting take place in whatever venue or form that is so desired, within the next two months. I'm hoping that we have a meeting no later than May, hopefully in April, that will address that issue, so that we don't have a surprise or unresolved issues when we get into the budgeting process. The other thing I wanted to mention to you that was brought up is that we did mention that we do now have a customer satisfaction survey that is on our website. If someone has a problem with a process or procedure, they can tell us, and we will record that information. If someone has a problem with an individual, or one of my staff members, or even with me, they can even record that information on the website through this survey. The survey will give us an effective tool by which we can monitor where the problems are, where issues might arise that we can address. And that's the intent of that tool. It is also important to note that we talked about the fact that we're going to be doing an educational outreach program on the UDC. Our intent is that your UDC was approved and went into effect, basically went into effect on May 15th of 2017. We're almost to that year mark. After you've tried on that pair of shoes, so to speak, that new pair of shoes, you now realize, does it fit, or are there changes that need to be made in that pair of shoes? And so it's kind of the same way with the UDC. We're trying to see now that it's time to go back and look, in an educational-type setting, to explain or to address those issues that may have caused problems or concerns by the development community, as well as the design professionals, as well as your average citizens. This would be included in that process as well. One of the things we have done is we have met with the chamber president last week, and we'll be having some more meetings with him. The intent is to create a forum in which, or we might call it a town hall meeting, in which we can invite the development community and the design professionals to come in and express their concerns and their issues, so that we can turn around and address those concerns going forward. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we decided that we would meet on the first Friday of each month, and our next meeting will be May 4th, 2018. And as Jeff mentioned, it always seems a factor, and that is that when you have food and provide lunch, people will show up. And that seems to be the, no matter how advanced we get, that's always the bottom line, no matter what you do. And so we're going to rotate the lunch between the three bodies. We provided the lunch this last time. Next time, the city, and then the parish will provide the lunch, so that it's kind of, we spread the cost out, so to speak. So anyway, that is my report for the master plan committee. If you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer those.
On the customer satisfaction survey, who will receive those?
It's on the website, so then anyone can access it and fill one out and be recorded.
When they fill it out, who does it go to? It comes to?
It comes straight to us through Survey Monkey, is what we use as the service. We'll actually have, they'll provide us with the information as to what people are saying and what their concerns are. So we monitor that on a, at least on a weekly basis, if not a daily basis, just to see if something's happening and what we're getting, you know, feedback on.
Okay. And he said May 4th. At what time?
That will, we've decided that noon works, and that's a good time, because from about noon until 1:30 is usually about how long our meetings will last.
Okay.
Councilman Bradford?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me first thank you, Mr. Weiner, for the report. I think you was very accurate in the things that was discussed, and I think it was a very positive meeting. I want to also thank Mr. Efferson for agreeing to continue as chair. I think his leadership on that committee has been valuable. And I think as we wind down this year, there's a lot of unfinished business that we need to conclude. I'm conscious, and I think the council members, as well as we finish out our term as council members, needs to prepare the next council for their work. And I think Jeff has laid out that itinerary where we can at least get a lot of unfinished stuff off the table, and then move the next council members. As a representative of the council on that committee, I see a very positive next few months. And I'm trusting that, and I think what you've laid out as some projected goals is very reasonable. And I think if we do those things, then we will be therefore advanced down the road. And I think, again, not only Jeff, but the other council members, Mr. Corbin, as well as Mr. Jenkins, has done just invaluable work in their tenure as council members. And there's going to be a loss for this body when this council term is up. But I think as we, in the same grain that I'm mentioning, how we need to move the master plan forward, that we will also start putting some apparatus in place, so that when our terms are up, then whoever comes after us will be in a position to move this city forward. We want to keep going forward. So thank you for your work.
You're most welcome.
Jeff? Oh, thank you for those comments. Certainly appreciated. Appreciate everybody being there. I know this was a long, and maybe a little bit not the most exciting, update to listen to, to some people in the audience, if you haven't been following this work closely. But it is also the first update we've been able to give for a while, because we did have a number of members who just weren't able to attend the meeting at the previous time. So while we did have some kind of unofficial meetings of members that did show up, we hadn't had a quorum in a while. So this was a long meeting, and it did get a lot of topics discussed. It was very helpful. I'm really thankful and appreciative to everybody who showed up. You know, the council members that are on there, Councilman Bradford and Flurry participated great, and we really thank them, as well as the members of the Cattle Parish Commission and Metropolitan Planning Commission, who were in attendance that day, as well as we had some members of the public who attended that day. So it was great. And we look forward to some more productive meetings and getting more people to show up, so we can tackle some of these issues. I think one of the things that I would like to invite everyone to do is something that we talked about during the meeting, is take another look at the master plan, if you hadn't looked at it in a while. You know, the UDC was a really large part of the master plan, and something that a lot of us focused on in order to get past, because it was, it's a little bit dry, and it's laborious, it's a big task. And we still have to work on refining that and getting it right. But there are a lot of other aspects of the master plan that need advocates, that need people who care, that need people who remind us to prioritize them. So take a look at that, see what else there might be. I'm going to pull up a list that we made a couple of years ago, that is really a kind of a task list of items in there. And we'll be sharing that and kind of using that to kind of help guide us, not only what we do this year, but also that we can pass on to future councils, future administrations, future community members who are interested in seeing us reach the vision of that master plan.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Efferson. Seeing none, another thank you, Mr. Weiner.
You're more than welcome.
I think we all got emailed about, from Mr. Crawford, for the Budget to Action Finance Report?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yeah, sent it yesterday. Sorry.
I thought you were making a statement, not answering a question.
You weren't getting your email yesterday, so I was making sure.
Yeah, it was in there.
All right. We have a public hearing. This public hearing is being called on ordinance 24 of 2018, and orders to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the city of Shreveport for the Long Lake Estates, Unit Number 23, subdivision development in Section 28, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Mr. Corbin, does the administration have a presentation?
Good question. Good afternoon. I'm Malcolm Statlander with the Office of the City Engineer, and Mr. Chairman, members of the council. This annexation tag number is 1603, and it concerns a 44.757 acre tract of land in Section 28 Township North, Township 16 North, Range 13 West, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, and it's known as Long Lake Estates, Unit Number 23. It's contiguous to the city limits of Shreveport and lies south of and adjacent to the Long Lake Estates, Unit Number 22 subdivision. The proposed annexation is adjacent to existing city limits. The developer's plan is to subdivide this area into 50 residential lots, with approximately 3,262 linear feet of public streets. The estimated value of the residential properties will be $600,000 per unit. Installation of all water and sewer lines, storm drains, and public streets will be the responsibility of the developer. A public notice ran on November 28th, 2017, and there were no objections presented. A portion of the north side, right here, of the proposed annexation is contiguous to the existing city limits. The city received a petition by the property owner, Westlake Development LLC, requesting this annexation.
Mr. Chairman, Malcolm did a great job. I'll sum it up in one sentence. This is an expansion of an existing neighborhood and subdivision that's already in the city limits of Shreveport.
Okay. Does any member of the public want to speak for or against this resolution? Any member of the public want to speak for or against this resolution? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
We have none at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have the following request to speak. Public comment?
B-44, Sammy, is this an agenda item?
It's ready.
Sammy Mears.
That's why I wrote it down. Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I think this is a wonderful idea. Getting a grant from the National Parks Association is a super idea, just as long as it's for the right activities that can continue. Fact is, when it comes to the pumpkin shine, other things that take place, like school activities at Betty Virginia Park, or even a field trip over at Columbia Park, these are good things to think about. So yes, getting a grant would be really worth it. It really is. I say do it, and don't hesitate. So the fact is, get the grant, or you'll regret it. Do it. Go for it. Don't give it up.
Thank you for those inspirational words, Sammy, and particularly motivated now. Okay. The, Mr. Weiner, you're up for ordinance number nine, A and E Committee.
Hello, I'm still Bill Weiner, Number 2, Longleaf Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana. I think I'm going to try to talk about these two issues together, because they involve planning and architecture. I've been at this a long time. The selection of professional services, it can get very corrupt and partisanship, and really bad. We've seen this in the state. The AIA corrected it twice, last time through the legislature. It's been working perfect, perfectly since then. And I really encourage the city, if they're going to do something, to follow the example of the state. I'm not talking about the present administration or the council. We're setting this for the future, to stop things that used to go on around the state. And it's an opportunity to correct everything and make it better. On the planning issue, planning and zoning, I also have a degree in architecture and planning from Cornell, and been involved in this community for many years. Planning is about looking forward. What's going to happen, not in months, but in generations. It can't stop at a boundary. It can be layers of regulations as you go farther out, but you need to know where we're going. This community needs a vision statement, more than anything else. I looked at what was prepared. It's not a vision statement. It's an action statement for the term of the mayor and the council. We need to look at generations, where we want to be, what kind of community, what we hold of value. From that, these other things will automatically fall into place. Again, on planning boundaries. If I was king, it would go to the parish line, and have a zone from the parish line to the five-mile loop, with one set of rules, a five-mile loop, to the city limits, another level. And the other thing, you talked about funding of the MPC. To me, it is so obvious. The MPC has to be made an independent organization, government organization by the legislature, will get its own millage, reduce what goes to the parish and then to the city, what goes to the city, and then to the MPC. Let them get their own millage. They can then budget. And it can, you know, it can be followed by what's happening now. You can change it a little bit. And the representation on the board can also follow the millage. But these are things, and another thing that is done in other communities, if there is a capital improvement proposed in a bond issue or something, that it has to go through the MPC for comment. They can't say yes or no, but they do the research and see how it affects the long-term vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, it's all we have for comments at this point.
We have no executive appointments considered today. There are no items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we do have some items on the consent agenda. Resolutions Number 37, 38, 39, 40, and 41.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
If I could just say, Mr. Chairman, the administration would ask that we postpone Resolution 38 until the next council meeting, to get us some time to require some additional information on that property.
That's number 38. Okay.
Yeah. Actually, you need to remove it from the consent agenda.
Hold on.
Motion to remove from the agenda.
Number 38.
Number 38. It's been moved by Councilman Flurry, and seconded by Vice Chair, to remove number 38.
Are you making that motion? Is it already made?
Please vote. A motion carries with six.
Mr. Chairman, the items that are now on the consent agenda are 37, 39, 40, and 41.
Motion to adopt.
Been motioned by Councilman Corbin, and seconded by Councilman Bradford. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries with six. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, we are now under...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to offer a motion to suspend the rules, and consider making the two executive appointments that were proposed yesterday, to get those positions filled, if there's no objections.
Second, be suspending the rules.
It's been moved by Councilman Corbin to suspend the rules, seconded by Councilman Bradford. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Chairman, if the rules are suspended, the appointments by the mayor were LaShawn Wheeler, Customer Service, who continued Department of Water and Sewer, and Daylon Thomas. Thomas, GSI Administrator, Department of Engineering and Vals.
A move to accept both appointments. Been moved by Councilman Everson and seconded by Councilman Corbin. Motion carries with six.
Mr. Chairman, we're now under resolution on second reading and final passage, of which ought to require one reading. The first is thirty-three, authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement between the Red River Employees Federal Credit Union and otherwise providing with respect to.
Submit. Been moved by Councilman Corbin, I mean, Councilman Everson, and seconded by Councilman Corbin. Any discussion?
I'd like the council to know that I have asked the city attorney about me voting in this particular one. I'm a candidate for Red River Credit Union Board of Directors on April twenty-first, and he stated that I am able to vote, so just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Yes, sir. Please vote. Motion carries with six.
Resolution thirty-four adopts the systems survey and compliance questionnaire required by the Legislative Audit of the State of Louisiana.
Submit. Removed by Councilman Everson and seconded by the Chair. Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Naturally, because you've read that thoroughly and you're.
Traditionally, the chairman provides us an email of summary.
An executive summary.
Or like an interpretive performance, like just explaining it, or like a one-man show.
But that might have been when my email was broken yesterday, so probably why I didn't get it.
Didn't get it. I sent it today. Mr. Thompson.
Number thirty, resolution thirty-six allocates funds to specific not-for-profit organizations from funds budgeted at other charges in the Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund, and there are three amendments.
Been moved by Councilman Everson and seconded by Councilman Fleury.
And I'll just say, I'm aware of amendments that are to be offered and open to receiving what amendments the council would like to consider today.
Amendment number one will include MLK, MLK Community Development Corporation is one of the organizations in which the allocated funds will be used, and that the amount is five thousand dollars.
I move that we would accept amendment number one. Second.
Moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Fleury.
Mr. Chairman, there was a question on yesterday whether or not the funds that was requested from the UP as well as from the civic appropriations was different or indifferent, but I had council staff to review the applications, and they are requests for different activities. So, that's, so I think that's, and then I think the use of it, of the funds would be very much applied and needed to the further expansion of MLK benefit.
Any other discussion?
Just a question, what is the, what is the proposed use of the funds for this?
This was programming. This was, this was, this was community programming, according to the application.
I expressed, I'm not going to say, I definitely expressed my reservation about pulling from two different pots of city money. I understand your perspective, I'm not disputing.
And again, and I, and I appreciate that thinking, but the, but again, again, that the amount is far, far less than what was, was, was requested. We're talking basically, you know, less than a fourth of what was requested. I could understand if it, if we were trying to fund to the, to the extent of those applications, but we are, we are only giving them, in my opinion, just a fraction, and they're going to utilize it to the best that they can with the, with the other fundraising activities that they have. So, like I said, that if you look at the other applications that are, that are on the, that are on the table, this is less than the other ones, and they are all coming out of one pot, and some of them may have been also a part of the other funds. So, anyway, that's my justification, that, that it's all coming out of the pot, if you will, but at the same time, the amounts are far, far less, this amount is far, far less than what they, they requested. And that's my, again, that's my comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That it, Councilman G.
That's all.
Anyone else? And that motion passes. Passes four to two.
Resolution number two adds the organization Compassion for Lives in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Some move. Second. Removed by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Everson. Any discussion?
I'll just. I'll just comment, this is, this is one from the meeting that day that we left kind
of unnamed, it was one that seemed to have a good application, but we thought maybe we needed a little bit more information about it, but, you know, given that Councilman Bowman made the recommendation, I think, you know, it's appropriate to consider. There was, there wasn't any reason that we, we didn't like deny it or anything, it's just, we were wanting to maybe ask a few more questions, but there's no reason not to consider it.
Okay, and since it just came on the amendment today, and I didn't see it yesterday, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to just ask you a couple, so are they five oh one C three?
Yes. From checking the background, yes, that's what I.
I'm almost sure all of the applications included a copy of their five oh one C three documentation.
Okay.
In the application.
I would just, I mean, I'm happy to, like I said, I would have asked this question yesterday, but it wasn't on here yesterday, and I'm just, you know, having not seen them in front of us before, I was curious to know if they are five oh ones properly organized at for the criteria. So, if they are, I got no issue, or we can vote it, and if they don't meet the criteria, we can unwind it next time. I mean, that's fine, up to you however.
And I think if they don't meet that criteria, they are not eligible.
They're not able to enter into the MOU.
Okay, good for me.
It's included in, in their application.
It is, we just don't have it in front of us right now, we all remember seeing it, without looking at it in front of me, you know, but yeah, we're almost sure that it was current.
Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six.
Amendment number three will increase the funding for the Inner City Entrepreneurial Institute from seven thousand five hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars.
Some move.
Second.
Been moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Everson. Any discussion?
Of course, I mean, you know, when they show up here, you know, an hour before the meeting, I'm just not exactly sure why, so I guess it doesn't even last to the proposal of this amendment, it's on the piece of paper, does it? Who's the sponsor of the amendment? You are. It doesn't say it on the paperwork, that's why I ask. Okay, so, I mean, other than the word benevolence, why change from the initial part of the committee? And I don't know what was, obviously, I don't sit on the committee, so I don't know what was additionally initially proposed, what they requested, and how we got to the.
I'll just recap the discussion in the committee, was, they were funded at this level last year, and there was discussion of funding them at a, they did attend the committee meeting and give a presentation about it, there was some discussion about considering a higher amount of funding than they had last year, but then ultimately, when the motion was made to recommend funding levels, the motion was made to fund them at the level that they had been funded at last year, and that was what passed. So, that was the recommendation that we had before, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, I guess my question is, is there a specific reason why the amendment's being offered in lieu of what the recommendation of the.
He was asking for.
I think for.
For the forty. For the forty. And to what, I just stopped it from attending the last two events that they had, I just thought that it was necessary to at least try to increase the funding that they.
Let me, let me, let me add this, that we approved, after we approved the first five, we was at ninety, we only had a hundred, a hundred and fifty to work with. We approved the first five, the committee, we was then at, we was, we had another thirty-five. And we, we wanted to wait and see what the amendment would be, and I think that's what we're making up. So, can anybody tell us where we are in regards to the level of these totality?
I think it's one ten.
Wait, what? I think it's one ten. With the amendments.
Fifty thousand before the amendments.
I'm sorry?
Fifty thousand before the amendments.
So, now we're at one ten. One ten. You know, I appreciate that, I obviously was not in the meeting.
Twenty was the original. Okay, wait a minute, now you're saying we had one ten when?
Now. With the amendments.
There was sixty thousand before the amendments.
That, that was available?
Yes.
That was on the side, yeah. Okay, okay.
I will say this, I, and I obviously wasn't in the committee, and these were some changes. One thing I thought was prudent was the fact there was a difference between the amount available quote and the amount remaining, because as y'all have been seeing, our casino revenues have not certainly reached the what has been budgeted so far for that, for that particular fund. That, I'm not saying the sky is falling, but I have obviously concerns that we're not tracking as we had hoped. So, that would be my concern. I mean, obviously, I does a good job, they've been, we've supported it for a long time, I've been there plenty of times, just a little curious how we get, how we get there in the last twenty-four hours, just a little bit more of my concern is globally speaking.
Just as a point of information to follow up, and I appreciate Jackie went and grabbed the hard copies of the documents, and I can confirm that the five oh one C three for Compassion for Lives is provided as well as the initial request for inner-city entrepreneurship was twenty thousand, not forty.
Okay. So, so the balance, if you will, is forty thousand?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand. Okay.
If we were to adopt all of them.
Yeah, so.
If we were to adopt all three.
So, we're voting on amendment three now?
Correct.
Okay.
But if you point to twenty-five hundred, it's not going to put us over them.
I don't think it will. That motion carries with five.
I move for adoption as amended, Mr. Jim.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Everson. Discussion?
Yeah, just a comment, you know, with any of, of these allocations, the council can request an audit of any of these organizations. I think that we certainly should, you know, a year from now, at least ask for a report from each of these organizations. What did you use these funds for? What are, what are the outcomes? Because sometimes we take this vote and we never hear another word. And, and I think that as this amount of money that's available to allocate to groups, it seems to be shrinking from year to year, and I think that it's, we have that responsibility as a council to get that information back. What was it used for? How did it impact folks citywide? And, and certainly, if there's some questions about how any of these are being run, or maybe we just draw straws and we audit a couple of nonprofits every year, maybe that's, that's a good thing to do moving forward, not to point the finger at any one of them, but just to be sure that we're using tax dollars appropriately. That would be my only comment.
I agree, I thought we bugged it, we bugged it up the last time. Yeah, I think we, we do have some, certainly happens to some who, you know, if a, if a five oh one C three is receiving city funding, it certainly can be randomly picked, you know, and that happens sometimes, so, yeah, I mean, if.
If there's only five, it doesn't have to be very random.
Yeah, well, there's other, there's other five oh one C threes besides those who receive funds through civic appropriations, there are other methods that one may become eligible for, for, to be audited.
Motion carries with six.
Mr. Chairman, resolution number thirty-eight was removed from the consent agenda, so a motion is in order now with resolution thirty-eight.
A motion postponed.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair and seconded by Councilman Everson. Please vote.
Yes. Yes, please.
Motion carries with six.
We're now at the introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to April the tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Resolution forty-two authorizes a mayor to accept a donation from Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives. Resolutions forty-three authorizes a mayor to enter into a donation agreement with Sabine Parish Fire District number one, Wards three and four, for forty-eight used Scott air packs and masks, and ninety-six used Scott four, four thousand five hundred PSI cylinders. Resolution forty-four authorizes the acceptance of a grant from the National Recreation and Parks Association. Resolution forty-five authorizes use of certain equipment by the North Shreveport Business Association. And resolution forty-six authorizes use of certain equipment by Shreveport Green, Great American Cleanup.
Some move for introduction.
Been moved by the Vice Chair and seconded by Councilman Corbin. Please vote. Carries with six.
We're now at the introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to April the tenth. Ordinance twenty-seven will close and abandon portions of Cooley Street, Uranus Avenue, and Jupiter Lane in the Manchester Annex Subdivision in section twenty-three Township, eighteen north, range fourteen west. Ordinance number twenty-eight authorizes and provides for an encroachment on a portion of the Magnail Street right-of-way. Ordinance twenty-nine amends the two thousand and eighteen budget for the general fund. And ordinance thirty will establish the City of Shreveport Planning, Zoning, and Development Department, along with the accompanying boards and commissions, to assume the duties and responsibilities of the Shreveport Metropolitan Commission of Cattle Parish, its staff, and the ZBA, as exercised within the city limits of Shreveport. It will authorize and direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary ordinances and other legal documents to request, and to request the mayor to prepare the necessary organizational chart, budgets, and to hire personnel, so that the Shreveport PC and D Department can begin operating on January the first, two thousand and nineteen.
Some move for introduction.
Second. Moved by the Vice Chair and seconded by Councilman Fleury. Any discussions? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries with six.
We're now at the ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance number nine, yesterday, that was a discussion about postponing until April the tenth.
Certainly with the sponsor's permission, I don't make a motion to postpone, okay.
Moved by Councilman, by the Vice Chair and seconded by Councilman Corbin. Please vote. This is to postpone, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Motion carries with six.
Ordinance number twenty-two amends the two thousand and eighteen capital improvements budget.
Submit.
Second. Moved by the Vice Chair, seconded by the Chair. Motion carries with six.
Ordinance number.
Did that get automatically?
Ordinance number twenty-three amends the two thousand and eighteen budget for the street special revenue fund budget. This is a companion to ordinance number twenty-two, it provides the funds for the capital projects.
Some move. Second. Moved by the Chair and seconded by Councilman Fleury. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Moved by the Chair and seconded by Councilman Fleury. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six.
Ordinance twenty-four enlarges the limits and boundaries of the City of Shreveport for the Long Lake Estates. Unit number twenty-three subdivision development in Section twenty-eight Township sixteen north, range thirteen west.
Seven. Second. Been moved by Councilman Corbin and seconded by the Vice Chair. Please vote. Motion carries with six.
Ordinance number twenty-five amends the twenty-eighteen airport enterprise fund budget.
Some move.
Provides funding for capital projects.
Second. Been moved by the Vice Chair and seconded by Councilman Corbin. Any discussions? Seeing none, please vote.
Please vote.
Who cares with six?
Ordinance number twenty-six is a companion to ordinance number twenty-five, it amends the twenty-eighteen capital improvements budget.
Some move.
Moved by the Vice Chair and seconded by the Chair. Please vote.
Councilman.
Cars with six.
Those are all of the items on the regular agenda, Mr.
Clerk. Mr. Chairman, it's my motion at this time to remove number two on the table there, Resolution number twenty-one, and I'd like to remove it and withdraw it.
My second.
Motion by Councilman Fleury and seconded by Councilman Bradford to remove number two of twenty-one. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries with six.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that there is any desire to move ordinance number seventeen from the consent agenda at this time. There are no, there are no appeals to be taken up at this time. We're now into reports from offices, boards and committees.
Okay. Mr. Fleury, you had a public safety meeting today?
Safety meeting today, and we covered three topics, and actually four, very well. Discussion about eighteen-year-olds and bars, and also open container.
And anyway.
Yeah, no smoking at night, live venues and casino, and then we also discussed streamlining fees for public service requests for different departments, so. Thank everyone for attending.
I think that was a somewhat healthy discussion we all had in that meeting, so we'll be looking forward to the next one. See, try to have a property standards meeting too. Let's look at the next council day, Tuesday, and I think that's it.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, the staff put a note on the clerk's report for me to wish everyone a happy Easter, and to thank everyone for having Friday off. Good Friday.
You've really earned your pay this week, and that's really kind of stepped up for us there. Mr. Thompson, appreciate that.
Madam, may I have any additional communication?
No, thank you, sir.
Does any council member have any additional?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask, just for a moment, I wanted to call out to the attention that we have lowered the, can this, can this be on the? I want to call out to the attention about our millages, how they have, I might ask those, put on the projector there, to show how we have seen a continually decline in millages in the city as thinking about the election on the twenty-eighth, that our general obligation millage, I believe, there, can you see that? Not hardly. That's not gonna, that's not gonna work. But anyway, I wanted to provide this as part of the record, Mr. Thompson, if I can, showing that we have, through the years, our millages have reduced, and what they are now and what they're proposed. And I think it's very important that the public know that we have done our due diligence here, as this council's been here three and a half years, that we have seen decline in the millages, and that we've been a good steward of their money, and I just want to make that as part of the record today. Thank you. I'm sorry they didn't blow up like I thought.
Any other council member?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Bradford, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to first congratulate these young people. I was watching them while the meeting was going on, and nobody went to sleep. So I trust that they, they was paying attention, and I hope we did something and cared ourselves in a way that, that you would desire to come into public service one day. But I appreciate what you do, especially being homeschooled. That's, that's a very valuable, unique situation in, for you to be so articulate and smart, and then you come down to present yourselves in a way that is very impressive to, to us and to the city. Come back and see us again sometime. And then thank, I want to thank the administration. At the last meeting, I, I had submitted some requests for service, and they got right on it, and, and I appreciate that. I must be submitting some more. There was an old dilapidated house that was on Portland, and it was torn down yesterday. Thank you for that. They eliminated an asset, got it off the campus of Willis Knight, and I, I appreciate that. And I wanted to ask the city attorney, the request that was made regarding the MPC from the aspect of having some type of return meeting with the parish commission, in a, in a, in a, in a, in a way that we could create some privacy. Can you research that and see if there's any scenario that that can happen?
Sure, I'll do some research on it, but of course, the law favors open meetings. So I'll, I'll definitely do some research.
I'm glad to hear that that's what the law favors. Good to hear that.
I mean, I mean, my intent is that we need to, we need to get, get the MPC off, off of the front burner. I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, we've, they've been, whether it's deserved or undeserved, they've been a whooping, whooping boy for, for, for the, for the commission as well as us. And whether or not it's the perception of reality that they are, present themselves in some challenging ways, and how we debate funding them need to be resolved, and we need to lay that to rest. If we're going to do something, we need to do it and get it out of the way. And.
Yes, sir.
So if you look at that, and, and then I guess it's going to come again in our, in our governmental meeting, it was, it was said. And also, and I appreciate the council, Councilman Fleury for showing, you know, even though we couldn't see it, showing that, that we have been.
Trust me.
No, I trust you. But do they trust us? But anyway, it's, it's, it's documented, it's documented that we have been prudent and, 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 and good stewards in reducing millages when those millages are warrant to be removed from their, the tax role. And that's important that they know that we, we have not done anything, I felt, that would create an extra burden of taxes on our citizens. And I said yesterday, and I'm not going to be repetitious and, and, and express all those sentiments that I did, but I will say, we got, after we left here yesterday, we got a printout of the mayor's future presentations in regards to the tax continuation renewal presentations. I'm gonna, I'm gonna see how, and I'm gonna go with the clerk and see how we can, and if you agree to it, that we will do something collectively to show our support of these renewals. Whether it be through a resolution, or whether it be through a press release, or whether it be through a press conference, we will notify you on, on that, because I think, and it was discussed yesterday, I don't have to rehash it, that we, we need to come a little stronger as a, as a, as a body. But if nothing else, if, if, if one of these meetings are held in your district, or if it's not held in your district, show up and give some support. Make a statement. The mayor will allow you to, to say, to say, and give comments to show our support of these. I really, I really think we need to show up at the Committee one hundred.
What is Committee one hundred?
For some reason, I think we need to show up at the Committee one hundred. Because again, the biggest community, they gotta buy in on this. You know, they, we, we can't keep saying no to stuff. We gotta say yes or something. So we got, we got to say yes, that we want to continue to have a city that's viable, and that's productive, and that's, and that's, and that the future of supporting our police, and supporting continual street improvements, and all those other things that these fund proposals offer us, they, they need to charm in as well. And I think whenever we can show up and enforce and support these initiatives, I think they need to be important, but especially if it's held in your district. Just find a little time to, to, to be with her and support her and the administration as they, as they tour around the city making these presentations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford. Any other council members? Just wanted to remind us all of the municipal governmental meeting, April thirteenth, at eleven-thirty. Just wanted to remind us all of that. If there's no other additional communication, then we're at, I'm sorry?
Sorry. Just briefly, just wanted to, and I know the mayor mentioned it in her comments, but I just wanted to, just on behalf of the residents of Stoner Hill, just express how excited everybody was for the opening of the Valencia Community Center. You know, it was one of the first ones that we, you know, sold the bonds for, we started designing it early, but it was a center that really needed a lot of work, it really needed a lot of upgrades. And so we had to go back to the drawing board a few times and, and make some changes, amendments, and I want to just give credit to the administration, to SPAR, to the contractors, to the community, all of whom stayed engaged, stayed active, and, you know, kept coming back to the table to see how we could make the best of the resources that were available. And I am telling you, we made the best of the resources that were available, because it came out really, really nicely. And we had a great turnout, we had great participation from the neighborhood, and just really appreciate all that was done to ensure that.
Thank you, Councilman Everson. We're now at public comments.
Okay, Mr. John Settle, please.
John Settle for Tealwood. Mr. Bradford, I love you, but I'm going to oppose any closed meeting of the commission and the council. And you can count on a, a litigation on that point. It needs to be an open meeting. The chamber and Dr. Magner had a closed meeting, and that was addressed. But this body, and the commission are public bodies, they need to stay public. So I don't think behind closed doors is going to help any communications on funding. The other question I have, and I guess perhaps I'm going to have to visit with Attorney Bradford afterwards, but it kind of bothers me that y'all amended funding today for two organizations. And if I'd have known you were going to amend the funding for ICE, I would have certainly come up here and objected, because I questioned that yesterday about the need for ICE. And there's some litigation which Settle has lost, it's called Settle versus ICE, where we, I was trying to make Roy Burrell and ICE disclose their finances. I lost that lawsuit several years ago. So if they're still getting money from the city, I sure hope they're disclosing all of their finances, and I'll make that request. But seriously, I don't know if your rules allow this, evidently do, but for y'all to make an amendment today to increase the funding, and just, I hear about it the first time out there, I've lost my opportunity beginning of the meeting to say I object to that, and request if nothing else, that that funding from seventy-five to ten be continued for two weeks. I'll try to get with Mr. Bradford to look at your rules, but can I think about that, guys? Because you want us to come down and participate, but by that maneuver, I lost my opportunity, and the, and the public did also. Thank you.
That's a valid concern you bring up, John, and one of the things I'll mention, I mean, it, it is, in my understanding, in line with our standard practices that are allowable to us, and one of the reasons is that, that money is pre-budgeted for that program, so it's then just an allocation, not a budget change. So that's kind of the reason for why a written amendment can be submitted on that day, as far as I understand it. But, you know, I, I kind of had a similar assumption, not, not about ICE, but just about the program in general, when I introduced an amendment two weeks ago, because I thought it was a two-reader. And then when I realized it was not, it was just a one-reader, that's when we sent it to committee instead of introducing it the last reading.
Today, this was just.
So I'm just echoing, I'm just echoing that one would assume the process is actually a little different than what it actually is. So I understand that, maybe we can do a better.
Well, I know, but, but by, by the mechanism, then, an organization gets twenty-five hundred more dollars without any citizen being able to question it, because of the way your rules work, how y'all voted.
There may be something we can look at that can maybe provide a little better notification of that type of change.
And I tell you, I'll, I'll do since about question, let me do some research first before we talk, so that I can make it informed.
Okay, Mr. Sammy Mears, another shot at the title, sir.
In your fantasy, I'm sure. Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh one. On the date of Saturday, April the twenty-eighth, the Noel Methodist Church will be having a block party at five twenty Herndon Street. It's going to take place outside, but if it rains, everyone will get things moved inside to the gym. There'll be food, music, and entertainment. So mark this on your calendar if you don't have anything planned for that day. So Saturday, April twenty-eighth, Noel Methodist Church, block party, eleven AM to one PM at five twenty Herndon Street, and there's going to be a lot of things going on. So come if you can, and if it does rain, they'll move it in the gym. They might even have a little bit of entertainment going on, such as if anybody decided to do an imitation of Mel and Flo from the TV show Alice, that would be worth something to see. Suppose that they were to go up on stage, and they did Flo putting down Mel's food, and he says, "Flo, stop putting down my food, I'm getting sick of it." So is everybody that eases it. And then he says, "Stow it, kiss my grins."
That's all we have, Mr. Chair.
If that is it.
That's enough.
That is definitely enough. And this meeting is a joke.
All right. Sammy, are you providing?